Good evening. Madam City Clerk, do you have an advisory you'd like to read?
Good evening. Beginning June 15th, 2020, the City of Grand Terrace has reopened its public meetings. Therefore, the regular meeting of the City Council for June 23rd, 2020 is now open to the public. Please be advised that face masks are required, social distancing will be practiced, and occupancy limits will be enforced. Comments from the public? You can contact via Zoom City Council Chamber by dialing *67-1669-900-9128. Enter meeting ID number 872-9500-8020, and enter password number 893-490. You can also submit your comments by email to ccpubliccomment@grandterres-ca.gov. If you wish to have your comments read to the City Council during the appropriate public comment period, please indicate the subject line for "public comment" or the item number you wish to comment on. City of Grand Terrace would like to thank you for helping prevent the spread of COVID-19.
Thank you. At this time, please silence your cellphones and be advised that these proceedings are being recorded. If you desire to address the City Council during the meeting, please notify the City Clerk and your name will be placed on the speaker list. Speakers will be called upon at the appropriate time. Each person is allowed three minutes' speaking time. At this stage, I will be calling to order the City Council meeting for the City of Grand Terrace. This is a regular meeting of June 23rd, 2020. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with which we have justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Present.
Councilmember Hesse?
Present.
Councilmember Robles?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson?
I am here.
Mayor McNibow?
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. We have no special presentations for this evening. Do we have any reordering of or additions to or removal of items from the agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor. We'd like to take Item 12 and move it to in front of Item 10.
As a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Is that it? Any others?
That's it, Mayor.
Okay. So we'll move on to the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by City Council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests to remove items at this time? Councilmember Allen?
Item nine.
Okay. Any others? All right. I'll entertain a motion for the balance.
Move the balance? Second.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Wilson, second by Councilmember Allen. Please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hesse?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor McNibow?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Thank you. Item nine is the approval of annual appropriations limit for fiscal year 2021, including adoption of price factor and population change factor for the appropriations limit calculation. Questions regarding that? Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to ask Ms. Fortune, regarding this item, on the next page, packet page 225, the third bullet comment, it says the voters may approve an increase in the appropriations limit, and for the increase to remain in effect, however, it must be reapproved by voters at four-year intervals. And my question is, when is the next approval date?
Ms. Fortune, are you there?
I would like to apologize, sir. Unfortunately, my speakers are not working, so I barely heard Councilmember Allen.
She didn't hear me?
She did not hear you. Her speakers aren't working very well.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Should I speak louder?
I don't know that it will help, but I can come down if Councilmember Allen would like me to do that.
Yeah, or we can...
Maybe she could dial in with her phone.
Okay.
That might help. She can do that in addition to being on video.
Let me come down.
Okay.
So we actually have annual appropriation limits that are already established.
Okay.
And we're just those based on population changes. But if the electorate wants to allow an increase of appropriations, then beyond the normal rate...
Beyond the model that's set by the state?
Right. Then they would do that. We're not anywhere near the maximum appropriation limits that we have. So I think the answer to your question is there isn't a date, because we've never gone to the voters to vote to increase the appropriations. So as it stands right now, we're in compliance, and we will always be until we exceed that standard limit.
So we have never, ever asked for an increase in the appropriations limit?
Well, the way it works, Ms. Fortune can explain better. So based upon our population and based on the amount of money that we currently spend, there's an appropriation limit that's set based on that. And so it stops the electorate from being able to tax beyond its capacity. And so that's why there's an appropriation limit based upon population, based upon what you've spent the previous years. So Ms. Fortune can elaborate on that. So, but when you want to exceed that amount...
And she's here right now. If you'd like her to speak.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't see her.
Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager.
I apologize, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, City Council. Basically, what he said is correct. There is a limit where we can tax the community. And if you go to packet page 230, it tells us that the city's limit is 15.2 million. That's as much taxes as we can impose on the residents and commercial for whatever tax at this time. Total taxes that we are imposing is four and a half million. So technically, the city still has up to 10 more million in tax amounts that we can actually impose.
Okay. So the whole purpose of my question was pretty much to find out if we had ever asked for an increase, because the wording made it sound like if we had, then every four years, the voters would have to reapprove that increase. But since we haven't, then there's no need for that, as I understand it. Okay.
Yes. And again, like he had said, this would be taxes, and not necessarily just to the city. So if we were to impose a, and Mr. Duffy could, if we were to consider a tax, let's say, a transient occupancy tax, this will, it will be subject to the law.
That's it. Thank you.
Would you like to take a motion on this item that you've pulled off the consent calendar?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve it, to this item.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Hesse. Please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hesse?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor McNibow?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down as Assistant City Manager. Next on our agenda is the public comment portion of our agenda. This is a time for members of the public to comment on items not appearing on the regular agenda. Restrictions contained in California law prevent City Council from discussing or acting on any item not on the agenda, but may ask a question for clarification or may request a brief response from staff to questions raised during public comment. And those questions raised to staff are going to happen after the public comment is over. So please come forward, based on the list that our City Clerk has. I have Isaac Steinlein as our first speaker.
Excuse my rigidness right now. I just got an anxiety attack. I've been getting anxiety attacks for the past month and a half due to this COVID, just the amount of people in my family that I've either lost or gotten it. So I do apologize. I only have a couple of questions for you guys, and just a brief statement about myself. My name is Isaac Steinlein, by the way. I've lived here since April 20th, 2019. I've been a resident of the Highlands. Since I've lived here, I mean, it's been rocky. I've tried my best to make myself a part of the community as best as I could. But for the most part, the reason why I'm here is because there's been labels that have been put on me through a Facebook uncentered account. It's a group of people within the city. They've labeled me as fascist, Marxist, ignorant. None of those, and it's all because I want to defend the fact of our democracy. I don't condone the Confederate flag whatsoever, and I've made that very clear in this account. I've tried to bring a rareness to this group, and all I'm asking is that, you know, members of this board, you know, can at least help me out with that. It's disheartening to know that there's a lot of young individuals that are in that group. They get silenced just because they're young. That's not fair. It's not fair to the individuals that were out there protesting, you know, their First Amendment right, and were called threatening protesters before the protest even happened. That's not right. A lot of these individuals are out there hours before they graduated. I commend them for it. I commend the organizers for it. The questions that I have are for Brian Lane and for the City Council. For City Council, asking if you guys have looked into recommendations that the State Attorney General has sent out. I don't know if you guys have gotten it, but they're basically procedures that the department can modify themselves. It's voluntary. It's just recommendations. So I'm asking if you guys have looked into that. And for Brian Lane, there's a big issue that I have with the SASH being covered over the badge. I just wanted to know if you can explain that for me. And also, I had asked you to be at the protest that day and to kneel with me, and I got zero response for it. There was a lot of individuals that were willing to do it. I ended up praying with some of your officers. I went and I talked to some of the officers that were there that day. So I just, I'm asking you as to why you weren't...
Thank you. I appreciate you taking the time to be here, and I know it can be very uncomfortable standing up at that lectern, so thank you so much for coming and making your points heard. And so I'll let Lieutenant Lane respond to the questions that you had.
Certainly. Thank you, Isaac. To your first question, the SASH over the badge represents a loss in our law enforcement family, and it's called a mourning band. Whenever the state of California loses a peace officer in this state, we recognize that fact by placing the mourning band over our badge in recognition. And from the date of those incidents until midnight the day of the funeral, we continue to wear those bands in remembrance of that. So that's what those bands refer to. To your second point, I was also at the protest that day. I was there for several hours, and I was with my troops on four different intersections at Mount Vernon and Barton. And my job that day was to ensure public safety for everybody there, and not to necessarily interject myself into the events that were taking place, but to be supportive of those events by allowing them to take place sort of organically as they did. And I have mentioned through social media posts that I was also very thankful for those protests being very peaceful that day. And it's a combination of the effort, the conversation that you and I had that took place prior to that protest, and with us in ensuring that that event was able to take place, and with the cooperation of the city as well, to have that event happen and have there be no incidents, no negativity. I think that's a testament to how we can continue to work together as a community in the face of these issues.
Thank you. All right. We will move on to our next speaker, Zee Evans, who is on Zoom. Not unmuting? It looks like the caller is still muted. Caller Zee Evans, please.
Hello. I'm here for a later agenda item.
For a later one? Which one, please?
For the engineer's report.
It's the L. Lightning and Landscaping District.
Which number?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Okay. We'll come back to you on Item 15. Thank you for your patience. And is Bobby Forbes here?
Good evening. Thank you. It's nice to have the meetings open again so we can all get a feeling of our community once again. My biggest issue is the fireworks in Grand Terrace. I know they're getting ready to sell them. I'm hoping that there's a way to make them be enforced. I saw the announcements on the Internet that went out, and I'm trying to get videos and people to do videos of the people that are shooting them off so that they can have the sheriff come out and not waste their time also. But it's horrible this year everywhere. Colton has set up their booths. I didn't drive by Stater's and notice if the booth is up here in Grand Terrace, but I'm sure it is. I would like to ask the Council to readdress this and put it back on a ballot whenever that next available time is available to do that. Let's see if the community still wants them. The last time there was a vote was a number of years ago. They voted yes, let's have the fireworks, but things have changed in our society, so maybe there's a different attitude. Can't help but bring that up to you. The other thing is now that the city's back on track, I would really appreciate it if they would start cleaning up the gutters, taking care of the weed abatement of their own properties and not just those that own the property here in the town. It's an issue. It's a fire issue, and I know it's been difficult the last three months, but it's time to get on board and take care of this before it gets too hot and we have fires. And third, myself, being an older woman and being compromised with rheumatoid arthritis, every day that I'm out and about, I talk to someone that has a family member or a close friend that has either died or come down with this virus. So we still need to pay attention. Maybe not as much, but maybe we do. And I, myself, am wearing the mask, and I don't, if you're not and you're out in public, you're in violation, I know that there's not an enforcement, but I see it every day. And I'm fortunate, I live alone, so I don't have people coming in and out of my house. But there's, I went to the hairdresser today. Now the nail salons are open, the bars are open, there's people out and about, there's big parties. There were many, many parties in Grand Terrace over the weekend. Many people not wearing masks, all ages. Just be respectful of one another, please. Keep up the good work, folks. I'm glad to have the meetings open. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes. Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak during this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. And I'm going to ask that staff reach out to Mr. Steinlein regarding his other question about the guidelines that were sent out. And we'll move on to our council communications, beginning with Councilmember Jeff Allen.
Recently, we all received a letter, when I say "we," I talk about my fellow council members, from our league rep asking us to study up on micro enterprise home kitchen operations and then determine if we want or need to send a letter to the Board of Supervisors stating our position. I read this letter, and I studied on the issues, and I'm just wanting to know if any of you other council members want to do this, send this letter regarding MECOs to the Board of Supervisors before the meeting where they approve or disapprove MECOs. That's the only thing I have, Mayor, is asking y'all that question.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. My understanding, though, is that we can't have a discussion about that item since it's not on the agenda. We do have a process for that, where City Manager can send out a letter and find out if Council has any objection to the support of it. So you can ask him to do that.
Okay. Because, you know, it'll...
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Bill Hesse?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight, and I hope everybody had a, who are fathers, had a great Father's Day and that you treat your dads pretty well. As dads, we still have to barbecue during Father's Day, so, but mothers do a lot more. But I just want to thank everybody for coming out. It's nice seeing people come to the meeting. Just a couple of things. I did a 10-mile memorial run, and you had to do your own course, and I did it through High Grove, and I didn't realize how many more homes are building up there in High Grove. It's a really big community over there. But I also do a lot of walking and hiking there in alone time, and I've seen, I confronted some illegal dumpers, and people are doing this in broad daylight. And it really gets, you know, the guy's backing up, and I told him to go pick up their stuff, and then they gunned their vehicle, and they swerved at me, but I moved out of the way. But what really gets me is they do illegal hazardous waste, and that's our water tablet there, you know, so that's getting, but I want to thank the Good Samaritan who came out there, because the next day he picked up all the trash. I don't know who it was, but somebody came out there and picked it up, so I want to thank you. So let's keep an eye on, I know we have some hotspots in this city for illegal dumping, and, you know, don't confront them, but if you could just get their license plate, I know a lot of them have fictitious license plates, but just, you know, like for the fireworks, get a picture of them and call our sheriffs and let them know. It's sad, you know, the dumps aren't that much, and it, there's a ripple effect. Like I said, our water tablet, we don't well water here, and when it goes into our ground stream, then it affects everybody. So that's all I have, Mayor, and thank you, everybody, for coming out.
Thank you, Councilmember Hesse. Councilmember Sylvia Robles?
I have nothing to report, but I do agree with, I'm glad that we're getting together in some ways, a nice sense of community to listen to all of you, you know, and to have that community dialogue, and I want to thank you all for coming and sharing with us those concerns. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, Doug Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to encourage all citizens that if you do see some illegal activity before or after July 4th, as we've counseled, try to take photos, but regardless, get as much information as you can, and then have the intestinal fortitude to stand behind our police force and swear out whatever complaint is necessary. I know your neighbors may feel slighted. That's not the point. If you're not doing anything illegal, then you don't have to have a problem. So I would encourage you to do it. It works. I've seen it work, and I think it would better our lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So when a lot of our economy has been shut down, our Transportation Authority has been moving forward with a lot of transportation projects, and we have a lot of end-of-the-year presentations that we received at our General Policy Committee. But we also did a few moves such as recommending authorization of advance payment on county employees' retirement so that we can stay current and take advantage of some opportunities that we have there. We also amended a contract with the Local Agency Formation Commission who leases space in the SBCTA building. What we found is that they were being charged for common area maintenance expenditures that didn't really benefit them, and so that was a really nice way of looking at one agency cutting costs for another agency where they were being levied unfairly. We also looked at the express lanes' privacy policy for collection of tolls and processing payments of violations. So anybody that's ever been in an express lane and they wondered about all the information that is known about their vehicle and where they're traveling and all those other good things, there are privacy policies that the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority is putting in place in advance of their express lanes being open, at least as recommended to the board. We also looked at an Inland Empire telework initiative. We received a report on that. With all the advantages now that we're seeing of being able to use Zoom meetings to bridge the distance when we're all working, well, not all of us, a lot of people are working from home. A lot of people have not been on the freeways. They have been commuting from their living rooms, and there's, I think, a little bit more of an opportunity to embrace that way of working. So this telework initiative from the county is a way that employers can actually extend these types of work policies and maybe keep some of the people that we have in the Inland Empire that travel to Orange and LA County from having to get on that freeway, and they spend more time with their families, and they spend more time resting, and it's better for everybody. We also looked at a change to a railroad property master license agreement, which we found that we were giving a lot of discount for those with multiple railroad property agreements. The sliding scale didn't seem to be quite fair, so we were recommending some changes to that. And then we recommended the adoption of the 2020 Population Estimate for the Use and Allocation of Measure I Local Street Projects Program and Transportation Development Act, and that directly affects how much money the City of Grand Terrace receives. So hopefully, with the new census, maybe we have a population estimate that goes up. Metro Valley Study Session on June 11th, we looked at a MetroLink Accessibility Phase Two project and recommended a release of requests for proposals on that item. We also looked at a recommendation of Fast Track License Agreement so that when our express lanes are in full force, those that use Fast Track for 91 and the 10 can use them in our express lanes as well. And we recommended a list of Measure I Valley major street program arterial subprogram allocations. Again, we count on those in the City of Grand Terrace for some of the approvals that we have to our roads. Further, the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority and the Council of Governments found that their legislative policy had been driven a lot by their staff. You know, they would go and they would come, the board would come together on legislative priorities, but many items of legislation that positions were formulated around were coming directly from that legislative policy. However, there was not a subcommittee of actual board members to review and recommend support or opposition. And so we had our first Legislative Policy Committee on June 17th. We also looked at a letter of support for SEQA exemptions, and we wanted to have the support of this particular SB 288, which allows for projects for the institution or increase of passenger commuter services on rail or highway right-of-way already in use, and projects for the institution or increase of passenger commuter service on high occupancy vehicle lanes. There's also some language in there that would support the expansion of travel through the high desert, which those communities up there are really, really looking to have because the more expensive it is to build roadways in and around our county, the fewer projects we can do, and our tax dollars just don't go as far. So we voted to support this SB 288, and there's an opportunity for the So, we voted to support this SB 288 and there's an opportunity for the members of the public to review that if they like. We also received information and provided direction to staff on the potential listing of the Western Joshua Tree as a threatened species under the California Endangered Act. So, that concludes my report. And this is my last month as president of SBCTA, so again, I congratulate our neighbor to the north, Mayor Frank Navarro of Colton, who will be stepping in as the mayor of the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority and Council of Governments. And with that, we'll move on to our public hearings, of which we have two tonight, starting with item number 12 on your agenda, which is a public workshop to introduce requirements for vehicle miles traveled thresholds and local guidelines for implementing the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA. So, if you are wishing to speak during this public hearing, you'll have three minutes to address the city council. And if you challenge in court any action taken concerning a public hearing item, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or described in the notice or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. So, the process we will take is we will have a presentation of the item, we will have written communication received, we will have city council questions of staff, and then we will open the public hearing and hear from members of the public. Applicants' comments would come after that. They are not limited to three minutes. Any oral testimony from the public will come after that. Three minutes will be their limit. The applicant will have an opportunity for rebuttal and then we will close the public hearing and city council will deliberate. So, we will begin with a presentation of the item by Mr. Steve Weiss. I want to say our community and something, something really long...
Planning, right, yeah, Planning and Development Services Director.
See, I knew it was long. Mr. Weiss.
It is long. Good evening, Mayor McNabb.
Mr. Weiss, Mr. Weiss is here. Before we start, we're going to be doing the VMT presentation. That is not technically a public hearing. They just moved it in front of the public hearing section.
Okay, I asked if it was a public hearing and I was told yes.
My fault.
All right, so what are we calling it then? And why are we moving it to in front of the public hearings? Why wouldn't it come under, I don't know, unfinished business or new business?
One of the reasons why, Mayor, is that we have a consultant and we're trying to reduce the overall cost by having him in and out.
All right, so all that stuff about public hearings, we're going to change the rules on you. This is going to be a regular item taken out of order and so we will hear from our Director Weiss. We will have questions from staff. We will have public comment and then we will close public comment and deliberate on the item. So, Mr. Weiss, please talk to us about VMT.
Thank you, Mayor McNabb. The item before you is a workshop, actually, tied to vehicle miles traveled. And actually, it was a winch, just a huge decision back in 2013 to basically change the philosophy of how transportation is evaluated from basically in an environmental engineering perspective to more a public health perspective, from level of service to vehicle miles traveled. I don't profess to be an expert on this, but I do know a little bit about how you evaluate this in terms of the California Environmental Quality Act. Really, what this is about is evaluating traffic performance in relation to land use. And what we've done in Grand Terrace is, we're a small city, we're limited on resources, but working with the San Bernardino County Transportation Commission, they've been a tremendous resource because we are part of the Council of Government and over the years, we've been able to provide input to them. They understand we're a smaller city, but we are a progressive city in many ways. So, what has happened over the years is vehicle miles traveled and for larger cities, it's very different. For urban cities, it's very different. For us, it's kind of in the middle and we do fall within many other of the small cities within the area. So, after all of these culmination of years and going to SBCTA meetings, we've figured out that it's time, July 1st was this magic date. Well, it's July 1st, but most of the cities are just about there and we're just about there, so we didn't want to come up with information that wasn't pertinent. So, we have the most up-to-date information and it's time for us to present vehicle miles traveled as it relates to the California Environmental Quality Act and developing mitigation measures for larger projects. So, what we did is, I don't profess to be the expert, but we do have an expert here and we've hired, who I consider the foremost expert in vehicle miles traveled, Jason Peck of Farron Peers, who's basically lived at the county for many years to work with the county, the federal government, and the state government. So, at this point, I'd like to hand it over to Jason so he can provide a PowerPoint presentation and a history of how this all comes and then where do we go from here?
Thank you, Director Weiss. Welcome, Mr. Peck.
Yeah, thank you for having me tonight. And are we going to pull the PowerPoint up? Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Appreciate the opportunity. Thought I saw it up there for a second.
Maybe you'll have to act it out.
Try and do it from memory here.
I think they'll get it.
All right. Ah, here we go. That looks right. Yep, and I got the clicker here. All right, so tonight, we're going to talk about everybody, whoops, everybody's favorite subject, which is combining SEQA with vehicle miles traveled, which nobody's really ever heard of, and we're going to try and make it such that it's understandable and allow questions to be asked prior to some of the requirements related to implementation of this policy. As Steve mentioned, this is a fundamental shift in how we look at development projects and evaluate their transportation impact, shifting away from level of service or essentially the impact of development on a person's freedom to maneuver while driving, basically a convenience measurement, and try and change it over to VMT or essentially look at the efficiency of travel or how development affects the environment. So, that's the fundamental shift. I will also note that this is, as all legislation coming out of Sacramento, something that's been passed and, in many respects, left to local agencies to implement or regional agencies. So, as we begin this presentation, this is just a slide to reinforce that SB 743 is just a continual evolution of SEQUAs. It's the latest in some of the changes to SEQA. I'll highlight a couple of them. AB 32, it's the Greenhouse Gas Solutions Act, looking to try and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. SB 375, talked about regional transportation plans and their need for land use and transportation to be linked. AB 1358, Complete Streets Act, all of these just change how we address transportation or SEQUA in general, all the way up to SB 743, which is this fundamental change to change the transportation metric to VMT. It's also important to recognize the intent of legislation when you go through it. So, the key component of the legislation is to try and balance the needs of congestion management on our transportation system with the state's goals. And really, the three key things identified by the state are promoting infill development, promoting public health through active transportation, and then the state's goal is to reducing greenhouse gas emissions. So, believe it or not, this law was signed by the governor back in 2013. So, seven years ago, we found out this is coming. It took the state Office of Planning and Research, or OPR, about five years to do public outreach, develop a draft set of what we call guidelines through the technical advisory to help us understand how to do this assessment. In December of 2018, those guidelines were finalized. It was turned over to the Natural Resources Agency, which is the agency, the agency who's required to update the SEQA guidelines, who oversees the updates to the SEQA guidelines as we make changes to SEQA. Those were updated back in December of 2018 and those guidelines do identify that all local agencies have until July of 2020, July 1st of 2020, to update their guidelines and shift over to VMT. And right now, as the legislation it stands, as of July 1, all developments will need to use VMT as the transportation metric for SEQA projects. So, what's the law trying to change? So, we talked a little bit about level service, auto delay, freedom to maneuver, essentially our convenience of driving, and we've traditionally used this as a SEQA impact. So, it switched over that metric to VMT or vehicle miles traveled. And typically, we normalize it or we look at it as an efficiency metric, so we divide it by population or per person or per service population. So, that way, we're able to benchmark whether a new development is at least as efficient on the travel side as existing development in the area. So, one thing I do want to highlight is, it's my impression that the state, well, I'll take you back to an example. So, if we're looking at a 100-unit apartment complex next to Union Station in downtown LA, we were traditionally doing environmental impact reports on those because downtown LA is so congested. We had level service impacts we could not mitigate. Meanwhile, 100-unit, single-family development out in the middle of the desert somewhere, we were not doing environmental impact reports on because we had reserved capacity in the transportation system. So, in my mind, this is the state's way to flip that paradigm and say, hey, from an environmental perspective, isn't it better to have people close to where they work, close to transit, close to amenities, as opposed to promoting, putting them out where those resources do not exist? So, we've got a little video, I think, if you click on it, we should be able to play the video as long as you're connected online. That's a short video, it's about a minute and a half long, that really just describes what VMT is. Assuming technology cooperates today.
Four vehicles traveling 10 miles would generate 40 VMT. To understand how much VMT a person generates on a typical weekday...
Could you go back to the beginning of that?
...it's useful to map their travel throughout the day. In this example, Jess... What is VMT? VMT, or vehicle miles traveled, refers to the distance that a car travels regardless of how many passengers are in the car. So, this car, traveling one mile, would generate one VMT and four vehicles, traveling 10 miles, would generate 40 VMT. To understand how much VMT a person generates on a typical weekday, it's useful to map their travel throughout the day. In this example, Jess starts the day at home, drives to the coffee shop two miles away, and then heads to work, which is 10 miles from the coffee shop. After a day at the office, Jess returns home 11 miles away. Later, Jess heads out and drives one mile to the gas station to fill up before driving another three miles to the grocery store and then makes the two-mile trip back home. By adding together the miles driven, it has shown that Jess has generated 29 VMT for the entire day. This VMT can be further categorized into the individual trip purposes that motivated each leg of the trip. VMT can be organized into three typical trip purposes: home-to-work, or HW; home-to-other, or HO; and other-to-other, or OO. This organization is helpful in understanding that trips to and from work tend to generate the most VMT because people are willing to drive longer distances as the benefit of the trip increases. Do you have other questions about VMT that you would like answered? Let us know.
So, it's just a quick intro video that we put together. We find it's helpful in describing what VMT is since it is such a new metric. If you can click on the PowerPoint so I can advance it. We're not, there we go. So, a couple key questions all local agencies will need to answer to implement SB 743 and start looking at VMT. This is one Steve mentioned where your city, along with almost all the other cities in San Bernardino County, banded together through SBCTA and SBCOG to basically look at all these together, develop the tools together and really maximize the resources to help local agencies implement this. And that's been a process ongoing for probably the better part of the last nine months. So, the first question is, what type of VMT are we looking at? And that Jess example, she drives 29 VMT, that's her total VMT for the day. We can also look at it as VMT per person, so she also generates 29 VMT for herself. But when we start looking at it as an efficiency metric, we're able to start benchmarking it to see if it's generating VMT that's better or worse than what's existing there today. Second one is, how do we calculate it? Essentially, standardize a methodology. I work with an individual who states that asking a traffic engineer to calculate VMT, if you ask 30 different, if you ask 30 different traffic engineers to give you a VMT estimate, it's like asking 30 different painters to paint a wall beige. You're going to get 30 different shades of beige. So, there's a variety of ways that we estimate VMT, a variety of tools, so standardizing it so that everybody's doing it the same way is pretty important. The final two, identifying potential significance thresholds. The state's issued some guidance on this where it's a pretty onerous threshold to meet unless you're in an urban environment. So, as part of the SBCTA effort, we looked at other potential thresholds, had SEQA attorneys involved in that to help inform local agencies. And then finally, identify what mitigation options are available to agencies in San Bernardino County. The final question all agencies have to answer is, is level of service still important? Is it in your general plan? Is it a goal and value to the community? Most areas of San Bernardino County, that answer is yes. So, what we're here today to do, so ultimately, it is recommended under the SEQA guidelines that local agencies review and adopt SEQA thresholds of significance through a public process. So, this is step one of doing that. It ultimately makes your threshold of significance more defensible if it were to ever get challenged. And then ultimately, as it gets implemented after July 1, you'd have to evaluate VMT for all projects, which includes calculating it, comparing it to the adopted threshold, documenting an impact and ultimately mitigating that impact if you need to. So, some quick notes on Grand Terrace. So, to do this, as part of the SBCTA effort, we did recognize that the local-regional travel demand model is the best tool or most accurate tool for estimating VMT. We've taken a look at how Grand Terrace compares to the county and found out that your residents and employees are more efficient from a travel perspective when benchmarked to the rest of the county. So, from that perspective, it would be more beneficial to promote development here, at least from a VMT lens, than elsewhere in the county. Grand Terrace does also have to balance the goals of growth, congestion management, as well as this new state directive to reduce VMT. Some of the nice things that the state did for us as part of the technical advisory is they did identify a set of screening criteria so that not all projects have to do VMT estimates. So, those include what we call transit priority areas. So, in San Bernardino County, if we're along a MetroLink station within a half mile of it, along the E Street corridor in San Bernardino County and a couple bus routes that have very frequent service, we can screen development from those areas. Unfortunately, Grand Terrace does not have any of those areas. We can also take a look at VMT being generated here in the city and identify certain areas of the city that are more efficient than other areas and essentially screen development that's consistent with what's already there. OPR has also identified a small project screening criteria and then what we call local serving projects. So, retail projects less than 50,000 square feet, local schools, daycare centers, those are all things that you would not, that are all local serving where they would be intercepting trips that would otherwise have to go elsewhere. And then, the San Bernardino County or the SBCTA implementation study did develop a tool to assist all the local agencies in helping with some of that screening, that has all the data behind it that traffic engineers and planners can go into to help screen projects going through the development process. So, projects that do require VMT analysis will have to use the threshold of significance recommended by city staff or identified, and we've been working with city staff on this, but it's our recommendation that the city benchmark itself to the county and benchmark to the existing VMT currently generated in the county. Essentially, treat VMT like we would any other environmental resource where we benchmark it to what exists today. So, ultimately, we are recommending that the threshold ultimately be adopted by city council through resolution at a future council hearing just to assist with some of the defensibility if it were to ever get challenged in the future. And with that, we can take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Peck. Are there questions at this time? Mayor Protem, you have questions? Okay, thank you. You did a wonderful job of explaining it.
Thank you, we try.
All right, so we will open up the opportunity for public comment on this item. Are there any requests to speak at this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
And I don't have anyone on the list that you gave me as well. Okay, so we'll bring it back to council and are you looking for direction to staff on this particular item?
Mayor, I don't believe so, just that we will be coming back to council in the very near future with these screening tables for evaluating... near future with these screening tables for evaluating, for traffic study guidelines, things like that. So, we will be coming back to you probably within a couple of weeks, maybe thirty, thirty days, I don't know exactly, but we're very close.
Okay, so then this is a receive and file, is there a motion to receive and file this Councilmember Robles?
So move, receive and file this report.
Say.
All right, motion by Councilmember Robles, second by Councilmember Allen, please call the vote. Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussey?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor McInnes?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you. Very nice presentation, we look forward to the resolution when it comes back. And now, the time we have all waited for, our public hearing. All right, so we have one item, zoning code amendment twenty-zero-one and specific plan twenty-zero-one, to amend Title 18 of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code and Barton Road specific plan, to regulate uses, proposing hours of operation anytime between eleven PM and six AM, and a related environmental determination pursuant to CEQA regulation, Section 1506-1B-3. Director Weiss.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Again, my job is easy, because I'm going to now introduce Heidi Aguirre to make the staff presentation.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of the city council. This proposal supports 2030 Vision Statement, Goal Number Three, to promote economic development by preparing for future growth by updating the zoning and the municipal codes. Last year, on October 22, city council directed staff to establish review requirements for businesses proposing to operate in the late evening hours, and staff is focusing specifically on businesses proposing to operate between the hours of eleven PM and six AM. On May 21, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing and voted unanimously, five to zero without changes, recommending to the city council adoption of the zoning code and the Barton Road specific plan amendments, establishing the review process for new businesses, and the existing businesses proposing to operate anytime between eleven PM and six AM. This proposal will amend Title 18 zoning, which is Chapter 1833, the General Business District, for permitted uses and conditional permitted uses. It will also amend the Barton Road specific plan, Table 1 Land Use Matrix, and existing uses that have been originally approved to operate already anytime between eleven PM and six AM. Prior to the effective approval of this ordinance, will be exempt from this review process. These amendments are proposing to establish the following definition: after hours of operation, which means any uses that have hours of operation at any time between eleven PM and six AM. Uses proposing to operate during this time will be required to follow the administrative conditional permit process, which is reviewed and approved by the Planning and Development Services Director. This process ensures that the community's health, safety, and welfare are protected by reviewing uses which may create negative impacts to the nearby uses. It will also require applications to be routed to multiple agencies for review, for example, San Bernardino County Fire, the Health Department, Public Works, Building and Safety. This allows the agencies to provide their comments and assign conditions of approval for the proposed use. Notifications are also mailed to the adjacent property owners, and the city will incorporate safeguards, ensuring that things like noise, trash, loitering, overnight security, adequate lighting, and building maintenance have been addressed and are fully mitigated. In addition, this also allows the city to review the use, to ensure that it's being operated in a manner that is consistent with the conditions of approval that are issued to a specific use. When a proposed use exceeds two thousand square feet, it will be required to do a conditional use permit, which is subject to the review and approval by the Planning Commission. For other uses proposing to operate between the time of eleven PM and six AM that have not been identified in the municipal code or the Barton Road specific plan amendment presented, will require to submit a determination of use, which will be reviewed and approved by the Planning and Development Services Director. A determination by the director may be appealed by the Planning Commission, and from the Planning Commission to the city council. So, tonight's staff is introducing this ordinance, proposing to amend the municipal code, and also the Barton Road specific plan, establishing requirements for businesses proposing to operate at any time between eleven PM and six AM. Thank you, this concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you for your presentation. Is there any written communication received for this item?
No, we haven't received any communication.
Okay. So, we will have council questions of staff at this time, and then I will open the public hearing. Are there questions? Councilmember Allen?
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks for that good presentation, and I'd like to ask you, I scrolled through, starting on page, back to page 243 of all the listings of all the various businesses, types of businesses, and sections that defines their after-hours operations. It's a long list, and there's two or three of them, and it goes all the way, you know, 251 has a listing also. And in all these lists, I don't see tattoo shops or massage therapists. Is that one of those businesses that will require the planning director to be personally involved in? And why? Thanks.
Yes, Councilmember Allen, the type of uses that you're referring to, like a tattoo shop or a massage use, we determine those uses will not necessarily be opened overnight. And if they would like to apply for an overnight use, those would be the type of uses that would have to apply for a determination of use to be considered by the planning director.
But we don't have them listed in our, in the chapter anywhere, there's no guidance in there for any of them to know that. We do have some in this city.
Is it that they're conditionally permitted uses that are listed here, and if they're not listed as a conditionally permitted use, then it has to go to a determination of use?
Why would those shops need that, as opposed to say a smoke shop?
Well, that's a different question. You were asking why they weren't listed.
Yeah.
That was my suggestion about why they weren't listed, but perhaps Director Weiss could answer your question about why those two are singled out.
Excuse me. Councilmember Allen, these uses are part of a general, general commercial uses within the area. They're not prohibited, but we do go through the same rigorous review of these types of uses. Miss Aguirre is correct, that if a use is not identified within there, we do make a determination of use. For example, massage, they actually have to go through state procedures and public safety procedures. Same with tattoo. I mean, these are, these are, these are uses that we do take seriously, and we have to review them. Now, some of them have been there for many, many years, so I don't, I don't know exactly when they went in there, but when a new use comes in, we certainly will regulate them.
I'm, okay, that's, I accept that, I just don't think that the state requires any more owners, and I see we have medical centers listed here, so I would think that the state would have some pretty onerous requirements on a medical center also, but we have them listed here. But that's all, I understand what you're saying, as long as that they have the option to be able to have that available to them, those businesses.
We were very, very strict in when any use comes in through our land use process and our business license process.
Thank you.
I have a question for you before you sit down. And then, Mayor Protem has a question as well. Two, I'll go with the medical uses. Currently, we have an emergency animal clinic that only operates at night, and then it operates on the weekends. Are they having to go through this process to continue that operation time that they already have?
No, Mayor.
Okay.
These are, these are businesses that have been in operation for many, many years. This is only related to new uses that come in. For example, I mean, a lot of this started with the ramen shop on, in Grand Terrace Center, when they wanted a 24-hour, and we carefully looked at that, and we carefully looked at to see, you know, how's the condition of the property holding up, and all these types of things. So, this is, this is really a public safety maintenance type of issue that we're trying to, you know, take care of.
Okay, so gas stations fall under pre-existing, so there's no need to determine.
That's correct. If they are, if they are, if they plan to change their hours or their types of operations, they'd have to go through us, and then we'd have to make a determination if it's a, if it's a major change or not.
Okay. Go ahead and stay there, Mayor Protem has a question. Please unmute Mayor Protem.
Director, do you foresee any sizable code changes that we may have to make, any adjustments, to be able to address specific conditions? For example, when we talk about noise and trash and loitering, you know, that's kind of a general application, I think we've applied these things to markets. But when we are talking about pocket locations and security considerations, we certainly don't want another roller skating rink circumstance within the city, so do you see anything, you know, reviewing codes in adjacent jurisdictions, do you foresee any sizable code changes that we need to make?
Mayor Protem, that's excellent questions. Actually, that's, that's the purpose of this ordinance, and actually, we have, we didn't have those regulations up until, until this point. That's why at two thousand square feet, that we would go through an administrative conditional use permit, which is, which provides all the safeguards for, for conditions, proactive conditions, and then when you get larger, you have to go through, you already have to go through a conditional use permit process. So, these pocket businesses, this is exactly set up for pocket businesses, working with shopping centers, working with small businesses, and collaborating with public safety, fire, whoever needs to inspect.
Thank you.
All right, further questions of staff at this time? All right, I will open the public hearing. Are there any requests to speak on this item? There is someone on the line, and I do, I am not sure if they want to speak on this item or not. So, caller on the line, could you please announce your name, please?
This is Bob Quaid with Willdan Financial Services. I'm here to speak with regard to the landscape maintenance district item.
Okay, that's item fifteen. We will come back, thank you for your patience.
Yes, sure.
There are no other members of the public that wish to speak at this time? All right, we'll close public comment, or close the public hearing. And so, since we heard from the applicant, and there's no need to rebut any testimony, council will have their deliberations and consideration of a motion on this item.
I move adoption of the, this item.
All right, motion by Councilmember Robles, second by Councilmember Hussey, please call the vote.
Madam Mayor, before we do, I'll go ahead and read the title of the ordinance.
Absolutely, if our city attorney would read the title of the ordinance for us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The title is as follows: An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, California, finding that zoning code amendment twenty-zero-one and Barton Road specific plan amendment twenty-zero-one are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 1506-1B-3, and amending Chapter 18.06 definitions, Chapter 18.33, C2 General Business District, Section 18.33.020 permitted uses, and Section 18.33.030 conditional permitted uses of Title 18 of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code, and amending Barton Road specific plan, Table 1 Land Use Matrix, to establish requirements for businesses proposing to operate at any time between eleven PM and six AM. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Madam City Clerk, will you call the vote, please? Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussey?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor McInnes?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you very much. Good work by the Planning Commission on this, thank you. We'll move to unfinished business, which is approval of priorities, project list for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Mr. City Manager, Harold Duffy.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager. So, this staff report supports the city council's mission to preserve and protect our community and the exceptional quality of life through thoughtful planning within the constraints of fiscal responsibility of government. And we're going to get this item up, the bottom, there you go. On May 28, 2020, the city council had a priority workshop to determine how we'd move forward in priorities for, from nineteen, 2019, 20 priority project list, and modifications to create modifications in the following areas: economic development, committees and commissions, human resources, finance and senior center, public safety. These were 2019, 20 priorities that the council agreed upon for the city manager. Based upon the review of those, the council came up with a modified version for 2021. And part of the exercise today is to make sure that we captured all of the comments that the council had. So, we moved things to, there are three priorities. A is the top priority, which really means that the project, or a component of the project, will be completed within this coming fiscal year. A high priority project is a project that is important, but it is not expected to be accomplished this year, but it also could be if there's some financial components that come forward during the fiscal year. And the C priority are priorities, but we're expecting them to take much longer, or they're in the infancy of the process. And so, on this list, we had development of the 4.78 acres on Barton Road, the Gateway specific plan, Taco Bell Surgical Center, Mr. TV Video on the corner of Barton and Mount Vernon, Cos Ramen Coffee, that's sort of a Japanese coffee shop that's located near the Cos Ramen, ramen shop, it's owned by the same owner. Hollywood Video Conversion, Edwin Fuels Fire Station Agreement, TOT Tax Implementation, Adult Daycare Advanced Accessibility. This was our former childcare facility, which is being acquired by an adult daycare program, and it is a state, it's an independent project, but it's funded from the state of California. A pit stop development, that's on the corner of Commerce and Vivienda and Barton. Lacrosse development, that's the parcel right next to the, our lacrosse next to the completed roundabout. The RDA lot, which was a former lot that we owned, that we'd sold, it's between the Taco Bell and Happy Care. And then, there was another item that the council added to the list this year, is the cannabis-related activities and licenses in the city. Those were the top priority items, there were high priority items, State of Brothers' Expansion, Storm Drains on Michigan. Other priorities were development on City Center Drive, Cage Park, Rails to Trails Grant to Access the Island River, and Walgreens Center Expansion.
Before you go, the development on City Center?
Yes.
That's moving forward right now, correct?
Yes, the, the property changed hands about a year and a half ago, at Spring Hill Dentistry, and they are in the process of developing their site, but for economy of scale... But to, for economy of scales, they want to also have another medical facility next to them. So they're still waiting to, to develop that partnership.
Okay, so they're not, they're not moving forward as fast as it would seem. Okay, thank you.
Under, under the council area, we looked at, the council had a, wanted us to do a priority, was a youth appointment to the Parks Commission. The council decided on that last year, and we're moving forward that this year. Items that were other priority items that are on the list, but action is not anticipated to be completed this year is return to the City Council with options to delegate special event support and establish a youth council or youth council week. We decided to do, the council decided to do a youth council week, and so we are still working on that as, as a priority, but not a high priority. Finance and senior center. The council had decided the top priority would be review of the business license fee, housing agency programs. Council's about $1.2 million in housing funding, and it's a matter of getting someone to come in and develop, bring, bringing a list of priorities to the council so that we can, we can develop those programs. And then expand outreach to senior transportation programs through utility bill and water bill inserts, but the, there was a very clear theme, the council wanted to ensure that we're reaching out to all seniors in the community, not just those at, or adjacent to the senior center. The other item, a prior, high priority was finance department, staff reorganization. Finance, more items would be review of business license fee, housing agency programs, duplication, sorry about that. City clerk priority list, top priorities was continue with the FPPC compliance, increased contents of Intranet, research use of Facebook Live and Twitter, managed city neighborhood recognition program, manage annual acknowledgement program. And then the high priorities would be scanning, continue that process, records, destruction milestones and research grants, city clerk department operations, lighting in the city council chambers, and then city council chamber recognition area, I'm sorry, reception area upgrades. Under public works priorities, these were top priorities and fitness park canopy, commercial way expansion, Mount Vernon slope stabilization, we're applying for a new grant there. Year three, it's actually year three and four CIP, looking at our fee study for our impact fees, development plans, fire station roof repair, highway safety improvement program, that is the HISP program. Cycle nine is for guardrails throughout the city, parking citywide strategy, that's for shared parking throughout the Barton Road Business Corridor, West Barton Bridge replacement, a project of replacement road, support for community events, and storm drain master plan. A significant portion of those items all have funding behind them, and that's why there's, it's such a robust list. Small cell site infrastructure for a high priority, and the priority C was park enhancement, utility pole undergrounding master, master plan. And if we've missed anything in these priorities, the council can, please stop me and we can make sure that we add those to the list. And public works maintenance, they really had about three major priorities. Traffic sign, signals, street lights, street sidewalks curb, parkway, and pothole repair. And then we had park, parks maintenance and parks restrooms. I'm sorry, let me go back to this. High priority is a storm drain channel, city facilities, city neighborhood lighting plan, and street sign replacement program. Planning and Development Services, the priority list. The 4.78 acres amend the master plan, Edwin Fuels Gateway Specific Plan, grocery outlet sign, Taco Bell, Mr. TV Video Parking Program, Grand T1 LLC project.
Oh, right.
That is the, okay, out in the, the Brian Trucking Facility. Blue Mountain Trail Grant, farming project on the 40-acre green belt, surgical center, housing authority report, Barton Road Streetscape, Michigan Streetscape, complete those designs, and safety element update and housing element update. Those are top priority projects. And, and once again, those are top priority because either there's a milestone that's going to occur where there's a funding component behind them. High priority B is zoning around schools, Grand Terrace Road, ages development property. And then the other priority was the sign code. Under public safety, we have protocols for special events and seasonal law enforcement needs, public education and citizens arrest, and citizens, how to educate the citizens on making a proper citizen's arrest, actually dealing with fireworks and other things of this particular nature. Also Stop the Bleed Program was a top priority, and then high priority was the CLP recruitment and Neighborhood Watch Program Expansion. Along with this, we also wanted to add the city attorney under the Court of Conduct Legislative Body Handbook. That's a top priority, and we'll be talking about that later on tonight regarding a priority workshop for the Court of Conduct for the council. And with that, that would be the council's 2021, 2020, 21 council priorities.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Hussey, and then Mayor Protem.
We'll back over here. Mr. Duffy, I didn't see, I don't know if we discussed it, because I know the state gave us money for playground equipment for...
Accessibility, yes.
Was that in the priorities? Did I...
It wasn't in the priority list, but we can certainly add that to the public works priorities, right next to the canopies and, and the, and the canopy fitness park. So we'll, we'll add that to the priority, obviously.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how long we have that money for, does the state take that money back if we don't use it, or is it ours?
They will, if, if we don't use it over a certain period of time, but we're in the process of, of ordering that equipment, so we'll get that back on the priority list.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Yes, might I bring up the elephant in the room, and that is the amending the emergency operations plan? We were great in anticipating seismic situations, we're great in anticipating possibility of fires, but we didn't have anything for medical circumstances like what we've experienced. We haven't anything in relation to, you know, the outgrowth of, you know, there's all kinds of stems in relation to that. So it would seem to me that we might want to put some priority on that.
Pandemics and...
That we have a plan and that we can go to work on it.
Pandemics and, and things of that nature?
So we can, we can maybe add that to the, under public safety category, under the EOC and the Hazard Mitigation Plan Update?
Please.
Councilmember Allen?
I wanted to ask Councilmember Hussey about the playground equipment you were just referring to. Is that new or replacement?
No, this was, the Assembly Member gave us money for physically challenged kids.
Yeah, okay, that's what I, what I thought you...
It was brand new equipment.
Yeah. Because you know, the, I thought you might have mentioned, also be referring to, there's several pieces of equipment we currently have in Rollins Park that are broken, and a tunnel and some slide or something, so. And those, I know those are kind of pricey, so I just thought maybe that you could look at them and see. They've been repaired a bunch of times, and they just, the repairs aren't holding anymore.
And, and certainly, those would be, those would be considered maintenance, and we need to make sure that we follow through with those. And, and this is a, a new equipment, but certainly, I'm glad you brought it, brought it to my attention. We'll, we'll check that out.
Thanks.
Further questions? Okay. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
Well, if you'll turn around, Madam City Clerk, and since we've changed, we don't have the... So I, Isaac Steinline would like to speak on this item. Please come forward.
Hello. I just wanted to know if the Highlands can be recommended as a priority for 2021? I'm a resident there, and for the most part, there's a lot of theft and just a lot of unprofessional, I'm trying to figure out the word to use, misguiding. My unit now that I've lived in for about a year and a half has never been up to date, and code enforcement can vouch on that for me. I lived in a unit that had a water heater that peaked 275 degrees. The code enforcement, I believe it was Chaz Ferguson, before he retired, came and reviewed my whole apartment. I had faulty wiring, I had a unit, basically a unit that was not up to code. My water heater would have exploded, and at the time, my renters insurance wouldn't have covered that. So I'm just asking that the Highlands be a priority for 2021 and for the rest of 2020, because there are individuals there that are literally getting their axles stolen, getting their catalytic converters stolen, getting all four of their, getting all four of their wheels, pistons, brake pads, everything. There's an individual, I don't want to use his name, but Mr. R. basically has forked over thousands of dollars just to fix his car, and there's no accountability from the property management whatsoever. We have a, you know, not to use these terms, but this is just what I've been using as of late, because I'm frustrated, a clusterfuck of cameras that do not work whatsoever. It's, it's made to make people believe that we're safe. I thank Lieutenant Lane for taking time out of his day, you know, a couple months back to hear me out, and I don't know if he's made any per, you know, procedures, or if he's done anything, you know, to help. I just know that I'd like to make the Highlands a priority, or at least recommend that to you guys. There's a lot of people that live in that community, it's a community within another community, and they're needing help right now. I'm needing help right now. I have a hole in the back of my refrigerator. It has the most horrid smell, but I can't do anything about it, because they don't want to do anything about it. So I'm just asking that the Highlands be a priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steinline. Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak on this item? If you could come forward and state your name for the record? And then if, if you want staff to follow up with you, if you could get your information to the city clerk before you go.
My name is Stephen Meats. I'm a cannabis owner and operator in San Bernardino City, and I noticed that you guys had that on the priority list. I was at, actually at that meeting when you guys put that on there. I just want to say that if you guys want to move forward with this, I suggest you guys keep it an in-house process. Do not bring any outside consultants in, like HDL or anything. They're all being investigated right now for a pay-to-play scheme in San Bernardino, which is actually holding up the permitting process for, I want to say, two years almost now. So I just want to ask you guys, if you guys want to move forward, I'm here to answer any questions or any kind of help that you guys need. I want to come to you guys now, because I would like to open up here with a retail location. So I just want to, if you guys want to move forward, I'm, I'm here to help, and I'm here to go through the process of whatever you guys want to, want to put up against us, so.
Thank you, Mr. Meats.
All right.
Appreciate that. Any other members of the public wishing to speak?
No, Madam Mayor.
So we will close public comment, and I'm going to come back to city manager on this. Mr. Steinline brings up, he, he was talking specifically about the Highlands, and so since that private property, we can't really make the Highlands our priority, but the elements that he spoke to, one of them is our rental inspection program, and in what shape is that in? Are, are we being as diligent on that particular program as, as we should be? And number two, how is it that we work with our, our apartment complexes to ensure that, that the renters are safe? I know that there are rental, there's a, there's a state agency that renters can go to for assistance, and I think that was part of rental inspection, is to ensure that our renters are given that information so that if they have grievances against their landlords, they know how to, how to access that. Based on the elements of the, the items brought forward, how would you recommend that we maybe create something for our priorities that fits within the boundaries of what city government can do?
Sure. So Mayor, what I would recommend, that we come back and provide the council with an update of our rental housing program. We can show you what our program consists of, and we can show you what other programs look like. Because on the surface, I believe our program is more of a exterior program. And then if you don't have any complaints or any issues, then you get a discount over a number of years. Mr. Steinline's complaint, obviously specifically about one location, but there are other complaints also, in terms of individual rental housing and other apartment complexes, so. So being able to bring the information back to the council, and I think it's, it's been a while since you've actually reviewed the program, and you can look at it and see if it's what you want, and if you want to add some additional things, we'll, we'll look at what others are doing too, so you can, you can get an update of what's out there.
Okay. Councilmember Robles?
I was just wondering if maybe you might be able to engage the Apartment Association? And maybe this would be a good time to talk to the Manufacturing Association too and, and see, because they wanted to actively partner on stuff with the mobile home, so while we're doing this, let's include them.
I'm, I'm sorry, Councilmember, I missed the, the agency of the group you said?
Manufacturing...
Okay.
Housing Association. Manufactured Homes Association. I have the information on my refrigerator.
Okay, I got it. Okay, okay.
Yeah, I just want to state, because the Highlands does have a private owner, and it is a community within a community, but I always have, through the years, have heard our residents who don't live there expressing concern, so this is really more of a global thing for all of us.
And, you know, and just, just to comment on that too, Mayor and council, is, you know, the, the previous item that you heard regarding after hour uses for businesses. So one of the things that's important too for comp, for apartment complexes is the proper lighting, things of that particular nature. And so, and that may be some of the things that the rental housing program needs to examine and, and look at as part of, as part of the overall safety for the, for the community. So we'll bring that information back to the council.
All right. Further discussion at this point? Right? What shall we do with this list?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the list.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Hussey for approval of priorities. Is that a second by Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussey?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Mcnambo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
I was thinking of some more items to add on there, since the city manager asked for more items, but I guess we can always do that later in the year, right?
Yes, yes, you can.
All right, so we'll move to item 13, which is reappoint planning commissioners or schedule interviews with all applicants. Madam City Clerk?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council, Debra Thomas, City Clerk. The item before you this evening is planning commissioner reappointments or schedule interviews with all applicants. This report, or this action supports our mission to preserve and protect our community and its exceptional quality of life through the thoughtful plan. Mr. Duffy?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And that expected presentation for you to speak.
We're going to a PowerPoint, I'm sorry. Okay. I asked if I could do that.
Again, to preserve and protect our community and its exceptional quality of life through thoughtful planning within the constraints of physically responsible government. The Planning Commission is a five-member board appointed by the City Council who serve for your terms at the pleasure of the City Council. Currently, there are two commission terms that are set to expire on June 30th of 2020. Commission members existing, excuse me, existing commission members are eligible to seek reappointment. The two incumbents whose terms are set to expire have submitted their applications for reappointment. The City Clerk's office advertised the two expiring terms in the local adjudicated newspaper, on the city's website, and on the, the city's two reader boards. The application period was opened on May 15th and closed on June 15th at 5:00 PM. The city received a total of six applications, and I do apologize, I believe in the staff report... report, it stated five, two of which are the planning commission incumbents. Historically, when a planning commission incumbent has applied for reappointment, the city council has moved to reappoint those incumbents, and if there are vacancies remaining, interviewing the remaining applicants to fill those vacancies. On September 13th, 2016, and again on July 10th, 2018, incumbents were reappointed in this fashion. However, there were one additional vacancy where the applicants were interviewed to fill that vacancy. There is no physical impact created by this action, as planning commissioners are paid a stipend of $50 a month, which would continue with those new appointments. The recommendation at this time is you can reappoint the existing planning commissioners, Cecenia and Alanese, to their current appointed positions, or if you so choose, staff will schedule the interviews with all candidates at the regular meeting of the city council on July 14th. That's the end of my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Are there questions of staff at this time? Okay, so councilmember Robles, and then Mayor Protem Wilson?
I have a concern with just reappointing people. I don't even know who the other four people are. So I'm given an agenda item that, you know, personally, I had experience with the city of Grand Terrace about 25 years ago. I want, they, I saw where there was an opening for the Parks and Recreation Commission. I applied, and the next thing I know is, I'm wondering what happened, and they just appointed somebody. I think it's very much a, an insult to residents that we ask them to apply for something, and then we don't even give them full consideration. I think it's an insult to them as being taxpayers, that we're going to conduct ourselves in this fashion. And I think it very much creates an insular insider kind of club culture that I think is not good.
Okay, and your question at this time is?
Why are we doing this, this way?
Well, I, I think she's asking us to select an option, because we have the option. Is that, is that true, Madam City Clerk? You, you haven't made a recommendation that we do either or, you're saying those are our options?
That is correct.
It says either or.
Right. And so she's, she's bringing that forward as our options?
I think it's, it's unfair option. You're, so, so.
So you don't, you're saying you don't understand why we have those two options?
No, I'm saying I think it's egregious to come, to ask people to apply for something, and then you, but then you're saying, but we, we, one of our options, we could just appoint the people that, that we've had for, since 2016, in one case, or 2014 in one case, and a few months in another case.
Okay, so you're, you're clear on our options, though?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor Protem Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. I would certainly support and move that we go to option two, staff to schedule interviews with all candidates at the regular meeting of city council on July 14th, 2020.
Okay, so do you have a question at this time?
I don't have a question. If you entertain a motion, that's how I will move.
Okay, so I have, I have time for questions now, and then I have a request to speak on this item, and then I'll come back for a motion. Councilmember Hussey?
You said we have six applicants, including the two that Ariana?
That is correct.
Do we have any timeframe? I mean, is there any limit, you know, how many terms they can do?
No, we do not.
Okay. That's all I had, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Councilmember Allen?
So my, my question is, this is, this is the procedure that we're following because this is the procedure we've always followed? Is that, is that the, is that why we do it this way? When I was a planning commissioner, I remember that when I was reappointed, all the other applicants were in the, also, I mean.
Yes, they were in the room. However, on, on that particular one, you were automatically reappointed. The remaining applicants that were here were interviewed for the one final remaining vacancy that didn't have an incumbent that applied.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's, okay, I remember. So this is just our procedure, then? Because I understand what my fellow council members are saying, that on the, on the surface, on the appearance, you know, we ask them to do this, the residents, and then, but, but then again, procedures.
No, I understand. And procedure is that the council would direct the city clerk's office to advertise the positions. Applications would be submitted, they would be brought back to the city council, you would have the option to review them, interview them. You can also reappoint your incumbents at the time that the interviews are scheduled. And I apologize if I did do this a little differently, and, but I thought I would give you the two options, since the only vacancies we had were the two. If you felt that your current commissioners, that you were happy with that, that you could appoint them at this time, or if you wanted to take the time to look at other options and other members of the community to serve on your boards, you had that option as well, so.
Mr. City Manager?
Yes, so, so Mayor, I did have a consultation with the city ma, with the city attorney on this particular issue. And one of the questions that we asked, I, I asked was this, have you seen this process before? And his response is, not, not like this. And so one of the things that, and, and maybe what has happened over the years is, there's been maybe a potential misstep, because if only two people applied, if only the incumbents applied, and you had no one else, then you would just go ahead and appoint, most likely appoint the, appoint the incumbents. But I think the process happens where, once you get other applicants involved, then you sort of suggested that they're going to get a chance to interview. So how this came up, and this is, what we've done is, this is what, we went through and looked at the record, and this is what's happened in the past. But I did check with the city attorney, he says he hasn't experienced it in this fashion.
All right. When we come back to the discussion, I'll, I'll tell you my perspective and what I've experienced, but if there are no more questions at this time, I am going to open it up to public comment. All right, I have, David Alanese would like to speak.
Hello, my name is David Alanese. I live here on Cardinal Street in Grand Terrace. Right now, you guys, I am currently a planning commissioner for this city, and I have really enjoyed my short term. Unfortunately, I was appointed by you guys in February 25th, and then this all broke out, and so my first actual meeting was held at the end of June. Experienced my second one on the last Thursday. So when I took over, I took over for a term that ends, the end of this month, on June 30th, for Commissioner Comstock, reviewing the videos, seeing what he knows and his wealth of knowledge that he provides with construction. I, I know I have big shoes to fill, but I just, my preference would be option one, save some time for the public, for you guys, not have needless gathering if we don't need it, but I just want to be able to offer my, my knowledge. I, I have, I, I've done a great job so far in this little short time that I've been able to provide my knowledge in. I just want to keep doing it. It's much easier sitting there and dealing with the public than sitting here and talking to you guys, so. Either way, whatever you guys decide, thank you. But my recommendation is if you guys would go with option one.
Thank you, Mr. Alanese.
Thank you.
Any other member of the public wishing to speak on this item? Mr. Steinline, please come forward.
So I'm proposing for option two. I think it would be a good opportunity for a lot of individuals in the city that are either my age, I'm 23, or older, to be a part of this board. I also wanted to say too, I've been watching the planning commission meetings for a very long time, or at least since I've been here, and one thing that I feel like is a little discouraging with watching them in, is that they're constantly being interrupted. I, I don't know if that's just me that sees it, but I feel like a lot of things that the assistant attorney, you know, assistant attorney could say, could be said before the planning commission, and I feel like it prolongs it, and it puts the planning commission in a position to where they're scrambled, and they really don't know what to say. I feel that's just what comes off the TV screen for me. Those, that's really all I have to say. I just hope that you guys pick option two, so.
Thank you, I appreciate your comments. Any other member of the public wishing to speak?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we'll close public comment, bring it back to council for more discussion. And I will give my experience as a planning commissioner, and that is that I do remember standing for reappointment and being re-interviewed. It was, it was advertised, myself and another county, another planning commission colleague, we interviewed with the members of the public, just as, as if, you know, the seats are open, they, they don't belong to anybody. I do have a special consideration that I, I'm looking at, though, is we, we just had an interview process, and we just appointed Mr. Alanese to a couple-month term. I would like to see an opportunity to allow him to continue, because we appointed him to such a short term. Perhaps maybe we should have just not filled it and waited, if we were going to then ask that he, he be reconsidered. I look at the fact that, I don't know that he's really performed in a, in a poor way, and I think he's had an opportunity to, to start to come up to speed, and that starts to, that starts the process all over again. So I would ask my colleagues to, to consider maybe a split decision on what we do going forward with this particular option. Councilmember Allen?
Thanks, Mayor. So I, I really respect that, what you're saying there, in regards to planning commissioner Alanese. It seems that, you know, we, we just interviewed him, and he, he hasn't had this opportunity, and yet, I, 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 I am in favor of continuity, because I understand, from what I know about our development that is going on right now in the city, the learning curve for a planning commissioner is pretty straight up. And so we have one planning commissioner who's, has several years of experience, is very dedicated, and is very, studies the subjects well on the agenda. Planning Commissioner Cecenia has always been thoughtful in her questions, I've noticed over the, over time, and her positions. So, and so I respect that, and I, I like the idea that she's, has lots of knowledge about the upcoming projects that we're faced with. And so I would not support a split decision, but I would support you if you wanted to go ahead and reappoint both of them now, but I would not be opposed to interviewing all the others too, with them, the same way we did when we were planning commissioners. You know how they, everybody came in, like you just mentioned? So.
Councilmember Robles?
I, I, I would support the split decision. What I, my understanding from staff is, city attorney advised that Alanese couldn't just be rolled over. We had to take an action. Now, all these considerations on the existing people, we can, we can do, but you know, there's a four-year gap between anyone else that's an incumbent having to come before us versus Mr. Alanese, so I don't have an issue with a split decision.
Okay. Councilmember Hussey?
You know, it's a shame we, you know, Mr. Alanese, he came in at the wrong time, and we really didn't get to see him work, but to make it fair, I think we should interview every, all six of them, and give them all a fair shake at it. Nothing against Mr. Alanese, or, or what their work they're doing, but six people put in for, for two vacancies, and, you know, I know we run for the council every four years and stuff, and since I've been running, you know, there hasn't been nobody not running, so I had to do the work, but I think we should hear all six of them, and they compete for the position. The appointing process, I think it's good, but that's if nobody else applies for it. I mean, one time I came to the planning commission, and I thought there was, that's why I asked you if there's a term limit. And I was in the library, I was talking to Mr. Comstock, I go, is there a term limit? There was three of us, Mr. Wilson, Tom, and myself, and he goes, no. I go, you guys still want to do it? And he go, yeah, well, then, that's fine, I think you guys are doing a good job, so I pulled myself from it. Now, I think we should just go ahead and re-interview all six of them, and go from there. If nobody applies, then we reappoint them, but if somebody applies, then we should interview them, just to make it fair for everybody.
Mayor Protem?
I agree.
All right, so we're going back, you made, you, we're going to make a motion earlier, so are you ready to make that motion at this time? Mayor Protem?
I am. Like to make the motion that we go to option number two, and schedule the interviews with all candidates at the regular meeting of the city council on July 14th, 2020.
Second?
Okay, motion by Mayor Protem for option number two, and second by councilmember Hussey. Please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussey?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor McNammo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One suggestion is, you know, just to avoid having this issue come up again, is just to get clear direction from the council, that anytime there are more applicants than the number of seats, that automatically it just comes to the council for consideration, rather than just.
Mr. City Attorney, that sounds like that would have been good conversation for you to have with the city clerk, and, and maybe a planning before putting out the, the notice for the vacancies. Maybe it's not clear in our code, and maybe it needs to be reexamined.
And I would note that this is, this is not a policy that's written in stone, or in the code. This has just been a practice of the city council.
Right, but I guess what I'm saying is, maybe it is something that needs to be a policy, so there's no misunderstanding going forward.
Okay, so we could possibly bring something back, so it's absolutely clear.
I, I have a feeling a lot of time was wasted trying to figure out how to proceed, and, and this is something I think should probably have a nice process that goes with it, so that everybody is on the same page.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. I appreciate your input on that. All right, we'll move on to item 14, which is adoption of fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget. Assistant City Manager Cynthia Fortune?
Mayor, I'm going to come down.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, city council. Before you is the adoption of the city's budget for fiscal year 2020, 21. The staff report supports the city's 2030 vision and goals, ensuring our fiscal solvency, maintaining public safety, promoting economic development, developing and implementing successful partnerships, and engaging in proactive communications. As presented at the city council during the introduction and our, during our deliberations, the total budget, as highlighted in blue in the last column, shows our adopted revenues at eight million, a little bit over eight million. at eight million, a little bit over eight million.
Did you keep the?
No, that's okay, sorry. And our adopted expenditures at eight million, forty-two thousand. That's okay. So to be specific, for the general fund, again, as explained to City Council, our proposed revenues are 5.8 million. And this just shows how, how our revenues are allocated and received. Our general fund expense is proposed at 5.9 million. And this is the breakdown of our expenditures. Again, biggest being the biggest being our personal services contracts. So this just gives a highlight of the top few of our personal services contracts, and as you can see, our personal services contracts totals 3.3 million. In relation to the use of fund balance, as stated to council before, the only fund that is requesting the use of fund balance is the general fund, where we are requesting to use a little over 90,000. And, and so that is part of the budget adoption. Staff is recommending that City Council adopt Resolution 2020-XX, adopting the annual budget for fiscal year 2020, 21. That concludes my report. I will be happy to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you, Ms. Assistant City Manager. Questions of staff at this time? All right, seeing that, I'll open it up to public comment. Mr. Steinline? Sure. You need to turn that microphone on, though.
Hello?
Yeah, it's on.
That's good.
I, um, I wanted to know about the part of the budget that consists of the Police Department. I'm wanting to know if there has been any recommendations that have been brought up by anybody from the city, or any recommendations that have been brought to you by any organization, in hopes to possibly work with them on not defunding, but certain, certainly restructuring the way that they're funded out, or at least with the, the funds that are coming from the city, how those are being dished out to them. I'm a big supporter in mental health, in providing, you know, the proper care to people. And one of the big things that I'm hoping that the department is doing right now is working on mental health. I know they have the Hope, I think it's the Hope Program, where they work with homeless, and they try to do the best that they can. But I wanted to also know if they were with those individuals, that those calls, is there any way that they're working towards making those, since they're non-criminal calls, you know, non-criminal, non-gun officers? That's basically what I'm trying to get at at the moment, is if there's anything that has came to the city or to the department, consisting of how the funds are being dished out to them, and what exactly can be diverted towards mental health, or be diverted towards proper procedures that they can, that can be paid for them. I might not sound correct right now, but I'm, I'm, I'm trying to help the city, at least with understanding, or I'm trying to help the city with understanding, you know, that there's individuals in the city that, you know, are, don't understand this budget that is being given, or at least the amount of money that's being given to them. So I don't know if this is what, this is, this is about, but I, that's kind of the main reason why I'm here, so.
Thank you, Mr. Steinline.
Thank you.
Are there questions from other members of the public at this, at this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I will close public comment and bring it back to City Manager. I think we had a, a comment regarding this at our last meeting, and so if you would like to address sheriff contract and Hope Program, and, and how we came forward with an actual contract for the sheriff at a different time prior to this budgetary period.
Sure. So just for the public's experience or understanding, so the City Council has had a contract with the Sheriff's Department for at least, I think it's 27, 29, for 29 years. This is maybe the 27th extension that we have going forward. We have a base level of service that provides us with, at a, at a maximum of, of two officers every, every day, minimum of one, one and a half, that provides the force of the city. But in addition to the base service that we receive, we also receive the full weight of the Sheriff's Department with additional services. We have a lieutenant, a captain we share time with. We have dedicated 5.7 officers, another, another officer, but that's just the base level of service. But we get the entire county sheriff infrastructure system to pay for our overall cost. But in addition to that, the council has over, since I've been here for the last five years, the council has found ways to augment that with additional resources. And most recently, what the council did was two things. One was for the Hope Program, the council was using some housing funds to provide one Hope Officer for us one day a week, about 10, about 10 hours per week. In addition to that, over this past fiscal year, the council has appropriated about $115,000 for a 30-hour officer. On Wednesday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, they fill in the gaps, so we have a coverage of, of two men on the majority of the time here in the city. So those are the ways in which the council has expanded our base level of service, and we're always looking and trying to find ways to increase the service. Some of the things that we've done, too, is obviously we have, we help pay for the ALPR cam, ALPR cameras, license plate readers, that alerts the, the sheriff officers if there's any stolen vehicles or issues of that particular nature. We also have our, our stagnant cameras on major street corners throughout the city to help support our, our law enforcement. And so that's kind of where we are right now with the existing contract. Was there anything else you'd like me to add?
No, it's, it's a pretty, it's a pretty straightforward contract. It is open to the members of the public if they would like to view the contract and see what's in it. I mean, we, what date did we consider that? It was in May?
I believe it was the, the last meeting in May.
Okay. And so, so as far as we're looking at the budget right now, it doesn't seem to me that that's something that we want to unpack as part of the budgetary process, since we already had the discussion about the sheriff contract at a prior council date.
Are you?
It, it seems to me that that's not part of the budgetary process, if we've already agreed to the contract.
Madam Mayor, yes. I mean, this, the council's already approved the contract. This is just an appropriation of the funds to pay for the contract in the next year.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. Okay, so further discussion and deliberation on this item. Councilmember Allen.
Okay, I understand, you know, about how we had deliberations already and all that. And the only thing I just wanted to say is, you know, what, what is Grand Terrace known for? Well, Grand Terrace is, is known for being a very safe city with an exceptional quality of life, and we always say that when we start our, our briefings or our presentations. And, and we have that here. We have a very safe city and an exceptional quality of life. And safety in law enforcement is an integral part of that quality of life. No one could, can deny that. It's an important part of it. But however, I believe that, that there can be a more equitable balance of the money that we spend on law enforcement versus the rest of the budget and other community projects. And I know that we already went over that, but in the past, then we already approved it. But then there have been some, some things that have happened in our society since that time, and it has put a real crunch on our budget. And things have changed since we had that discussion with our budget. So one of the things that I wonder if people have taken notice of is, the level of our service hasn't changed, but our costs have. Our costs have increased half a million dollars in less than a decade, and in a couple of years, they're gonna be over a million. And the level of service won't change. It'll be the same. And our income, our revenue, is not changing. It's the same. But, and so, safety, law enforcement, is, as it, like I said, integral part of the quality of life, but so are, there are other things that are also part of, of a good quality of life in this city that we can't pay for. We can't pay for streetlights, but residents are paying for streetlights, but they don't have streetlights, you know? And then, and, and then we could also put in traffic calming devices, and then you wouldn't have to have cops sitting on the streets chasing down the people who can't drive the speed limit. There's a lot of ways that we can shift funds and still have a, a, a great level of law enforcement and be a more equitable, fair solution and provide, continue to be able to provide that great quality of life that our residents expect. That's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Mayor Protim Wilson. And then Councilmember Hussey.
My question is, my question is budget-oriented, and I'd like to direct it to Merchant. It appears as if, and maybe, maybe it's because there were so many numbers, that I, I thought I saw out of my, the corner of my eye, that we were betting on some backfilling measures in relation to our deficit. If that is the case, how solid is that? If that's not the case, then is it appropriate for us to have maybe a, a separate sheet that shows us what the progress is gonna be on those backfill measures? Because frankly, I can't keep track of them. I know there's several programs out there that say that they're gonna give away free money, you know, just like the Joker and Batman. But if it's actually gonna come in our direction, and it looks pretty positive, I'd like to be able to track it so that we don't have to worry about tapping additional money for, from our general fund.
Mr. Duffy, would you like to take that?
Yes. Was there a particular slide you were referencing, sir? You said you looked at the numbers or, or in the budget?
Well, I think early on in our budget discussion, we talked about asking the county for assistance, and, and then other applications that have been made for assistance.
But what the council has before them in this particular budget is the conservative estimate, and there, there's, there's no big pie in the sky in, in, in this, in this base budget. My, my goal is to come back to you in July and give you an update, and the position would be positive versus, this is the, this is the base where we are right now. So, so you're approving a budget not based upon $180,000, potentially coming from the county or coming from the state. Your budget that you have right now is based on your, your real existing revenues that you have.
Mayor, please thank the City Manager for his comments. That helps light, you know, brings some light to the assumptions, which is exactly what I'm trying to concentrate on, and that is, a budget is not a budget. It's a wish list, unless it has, it's based on specific assumptions. And it's only good for the very day that you make it. So now that I know that there aren't any soft, let's say, called backfill, there's no soft backfill built into the, the budget, then it sounds like it could only go better from here.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Hussey, you have comments, questions?
Yeah, comment, Mayor. About the sheriffs, and, you know, Mr. Allen's right, yeah, the cost has gone up. Everything in this world's gone up. Still, you know, I go to the grocery store, I'm getting less groceries for what I'm paying, the same price I did 10 years ago. I mean, a lot less. Unfortunately, that's the nature of the beast. Sheriff's gone up, not by their choice, but the county, they make their estimates, they got stuff to pay for. The insurance is crazy on it. But numerous times, we had residents complain about people not stopping at traffic, stoplights, you know? And I know that they came out with, you know, the cameras, they got rid of all the red light cameras. Somebody won a lawsuit on that, so we can't use those anymore. It was a good way, use them while, you know, using the police force right there and having somebody sit the corner. So the residents came to us and say, hey, schools are starting, people are running stop signs, one kid got hit by a car. We want more sheriffs out there. We found the money for more sheriffs to be out there to make sure our kids get to school safe, because it's crazy out there. So we did that. Mr. Duffy, you know, we got the money for that. The homeless problem, we have, you see them, I mean, they might count four, but we have more than four. I see them all the time. We have some that are really nice, but some that could go just like that. The Hope Program officers, yeah, they're officers, but when you call 911, they're gonna come, and they're trained to de-escalate the situation. They're trained to evaluate the mental issues. They're trained to give areas where that person could get help. Now, it's up to the homeless person or the mental health to take it. They could go, I think, three days, they could put them in there for their own self-protection. After that, they're back out on the street. So they're limited what they can do. But I walked with, and I talked to those officers, and I've been on things with them from Loma Linda and stuff, and those officers are really good guys, and they want to take care of homeless things. They're not going there to arrest them, they want to work with it. This young man talked about high growth. You know, lieutenant, you know, hopefully we could have, you know, extra patrol go through high growth, because they are residents. And, you know, it is, my son lived in those apartment complex, and he moved out. Nothing but hate and havoc over there, and it's a shame that the way they do that. They should have security, they should upgrade. Hopefully, we could take care of that. But I would like to see the sheriffs, you know, they patrol, they can't see everything, it's up to the citizens, you know, they're on a push for the citizen patrol, but it's up to you guys and everybody to keep an eye out, and then it's up to you to say something and back it up. But we have, every resident's come up, they always want it more and more, all the sheriffs, and we only have so many pennies, so we're trying to do our best. But that was the thing why it's going up, because they want, you know, the, people are bypassing stop signs, the children's safety crossing the street, it was, you know, and also at the schools, the safety for that. They wanted a school resource officer. Colton Joint Unified was blessed enough, they took the school resource officer, which he's involved in a lot of other things besides just being an officer. He's a mentor, he's a parent to a lot of these kids, and he gets them going. He's always at every game. I see him at the band thing. He's there with all these kids, and they really look up to him. I know my kids were with the school resource officer. So I know, Mr. Allen, it costs, I wish, you know, I wish we could put more money into our savings. I believe in savings for the future, but hopefully we get back on there. We're blessed enough for the council to all get together and then make that budget where we could have a rainy day fund, where we weren't fighting a bullet on this last little pandemic thing. You know, I love, and the Grand Terrace is safe, but to continue that safe thing, you have to invest in your community to make sure it's safe. And I, you know, we don't, I don't tell the sheriffs how, how much it charges, you know, it'd be nice if they take it away, but we're, they're, we're contracted through them, and it's up to the county. And I think of the county, you know, maybe the county will do something when they call 911 for we got a problem, and the county will send a mental health advisor. I know my son's saying they're gonna start having mental health people in their patrol cars in Riverside once in a while for part of their Hope Program, we'll have that. So, but the de-escalated situation, and, I mean, I worked with it personally at the prison, and you could talk to one person one minute, like commas data, and next minute, that person just turns on you, and he wants to, I won't tell you what he wants to do, but it's what the sheriffs go through, and they try to do it, and it just all depends on it. But I think our sheriff's doing a good job for what resources we have, the cameras. We were asked to bring in cameras. Those cameras solved a lot of crimes. They solved the murders in our city. That was a good resource. Be nice, you know, people want Big Brother, they want cameras everywhere, but we can only go so much, and we're trying little by little by little. So that's all I had, Mayor. I just want to talk about, you know, about the money on that, and how much more, how much the sheriff does besides just, you know, arrest and protection. They do, they go a lot out for the community, even the fire department, they go out for the community, all our first responders.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussey. Okay, before us, we have the budget, and our staff would like to know if we would like to adopt this, or if we're going to have a special meeting to come back and have more discussion on it.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the adoption of the budget for 2020 and 2021.
I second that.
All right, there's a motion by Councilmember Hussey, and a second by Councilmember Robles. Please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen.
No.
Councilmember Hussey.
Yes.
Councilmember Robles.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Wilson.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor McNaboe?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We're going to move on to item 15, which is consideration of resolutions initiating proceedings to levy annual assessments for fiscal year 2020, 2021 for the City of Grand Terrace Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District 89-1, preliminary approval, the related engineers report and declaring its intention to conduct a public hearing on July 14th, 2020 and to levy and collect annual assessments related there to Mr. Director of Public Works, Steve, uh, well, no, we have a public works report who will be giving us that. Steve Weiss was standing up there, so I thought maybe he was venturing into public works. No, that's not true.
Madam Mayor, Management Analyst Todd Nakasaki is going to be giving this report and he's participating via Zoom.
Okay, Analyst Nakasaki, please. Give your report.
Thank you, Mayor McNaboe, Mayor Pro Tem and City Council. Todd Nakasaki, Management Analyst. The staff report before you supports the following goals. Next slide. Goal number one, ensure our fiscal viability by ensuring appropriate cost recovery for services. Next slide. And to give you a quick background, so in 1989, the city required developers to create an assessment district for maintaining landscaping and lighting. Since then, there have been five annexations and totaling seven different tracks and seven different zones. Each tract being a zone in the district each year. And each year, an engineer's report is prepared for the assessments. The preliminary engineer's report prepared by Wildon is included in the staff report. And we'll briefly go through each one of these zones. Next slide. So our first zone here is tract 13364 Canal. Next slide. Our second tract is tract 14264 Forest City Phase 2. And next slide. Our third tract and Zone 3 is 14471 at Oriole. Next slide. Zone 4, tract 17766 at Greenbrier. Next slide. Zone 5, tract 18793 Palomino. Zone 6, next slide. Tract 18071 Jaden. And next slide, please. And our last zone, Zone 7, tract 18604 at Tesoro and Van Buren. So at this time, staff is recommending the, the adoption of the resolutions to initiate proceedings to levy annual assessments for the 2020, 21 fiscal year, ordering the engineer to prepare and file a report, preliminarily approve the engineer's report prepared by Wildon, and declare the city's intention to conduct a public hearing on July 14th, 2020 on landscaping and lighting assessment district number 89-01 and to levy and collect annual assessments for the fiscal year 2020, 2021. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions. I have representatives from Wildon, Bob Quaid and Xandra Evans on the line, so patiently, here to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Analyst Nakasaki. So to clarify, we are considering a resolution to move forward with the public hearings. We are not adopting the landscaping and lighting district engineering report tonight.
Madam Mayor?
That's correct. We'll be setting the date for the public hearing. This is just to, to preliminarily approve the engineer's report.
So we're preliminary approving the, the engineer's report tonight?
That is correct.
That wouldn't be part of the public hearing?
No, we, we do a preliminary approval. The third resolution that is on the agenda tonight is to set the public hearing for the next meeting.
Okay.
We conduct the public hearing and then after that, we do the final.
Okay, so questions on the engineering report for tonight, if there are questions?
Sure.
Very good. Questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Allen?
So my understanding is, is that we are not able to collect the total amount from one of the particular zones. Is that correct? The total, Zone 1?
That probably is, I have to look at Zone 1. That probably is correct in terms of, originally, the districts were established without a escalator in, in it. And the only way to increase that would be go back to the homeowners and ask them, would they like to assess themselves for the additional cost? And usually, the, the services are lights and landscaping. And so over time, as energy has increased, you run into an issue where your fee, which if it was one rate that hasn't been adjusted, it does not can keep up with, with, with the cost. And so I think there is one, one district there and we go back or advance the slides or go back on the slides. Todd or any of the consultants, is that the correct one, Zone 1?
And I think one of our consultants is on the phone. He was one that, that you brought up earlier. Okay.
Yes, this is Bob Quaid, Principal Consultant with Wildon, Honorable Mayor and members of council. I can answer that question. Yes, it is Zone 1 that has a shortfall of about 36, $33,000. In addition to the general, general benefit of $291 that is, has to be covered by the general fund. So about $3,200 total.
And so, because I remember, we had to do this last time also. Last time, we, we had, there was a little brief discussion about this. And that, is that the only alternative? Is that the residents would have to vote on assessing themselves? Or we can't reassess it ourselves each year or anything like that?
I'll let the consultant answer that, but you, but you can't reassess them yourselves. What you can do is you can, you can reduce the level of service, but you can't assess them at a higher rate. Maybe the consultant might want to add to that.
Okay.
Yes, this is Bob Quaid again. Yeah, that's correct. The only way to increase the, the maximum assessment or, or to even input in an escalator on this particular district, you would have to go to a Prop 218 ballot to the 20 property owners or parcel owners that are in this district. And you'd have to have a 51%, 50% plus one positive voter or it's really a negative. It can't be more than 51% negative and then you can increase those assessments. The other alternative is to try to reduce the budget, which is really the only thing you have under your control right now.
Okay, thanks. And it's 33,000 is the shortfall?
It's, it's three.
It's roughly, yes.
Okay.
33,000. Okay.
No, 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 3,300.
3,300.
Okay.
That's a little bit better. Thank you for scaring us and then reducing it.
Is that, is that the annual amount?
That is the annual.
Oh, did I say, did I say 30, 30,000? I apologize.
At one point, you did, but you clarified it later on.
Yeah.
All right. I have a question about the lighting. We recently changed the type of light bulbs that were used in our streetlights. Is that true?
That is correct, Mayor.
And they are more energy efficient?
That is correct.
Are we seeing that that has reduced the cost of energy?
We have and we actually track that. So we, we are realizing those, those savings. So I would imagine if we look at this particular number, that the deficit has gone down. But as you see, lighting isn't the big, isn't the big cost here. It's water, tree trimming removal and contract maintenance.
Okay. Further questions of staff?
And Mayor, if I can just add to that. So, so every time we get a new development, one of our requirements is that we add them to this lighting and landscaping district to ensure that other residents aren't subsidizing the cost for, for those services.
Thank you. And we have escalators built into those.
Into those new ones, absolutely.
All right. Councilmember Allen?
So my question then, based on what you just said, Mr. Duffy, are there any residents here, are there any streets, any neighborhoods where residents are paying for lighting where there are no lights?
It's a trick question.
I'm sorry, say it again, sir.
Are there any residents paying for lighting where there are no lights?
Are there any residents paying for lights where there are no lights?
On their streets, no streetlights.
So they have no streetlights, but a part of the standard, a part of the standard tax base, yes, because we're using, we're using general fund money to support those lights. So for example, no one's paying an assessment and not getting lights. What they're doing is their, 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 their streets have lights and everyone of the, of the general fund is paying for those lights. So you're not, you're not being assessed on your street and not paying.
Does every street in the city have lights on it?
They do not.
Councilmember Allen, did you get your question answered?
He answered my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll go to public comment. NZ Evans has been waiting patiently on Zoom to speak on this item.
My counterpart, Bob answered all the questions.
What's that?
My counterpart, Bob Quaid with Wildon Financial, answered the questions.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the other caller we have is Will Dan, is that as well?
Correct.
Okay. Any other requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
Mayor, I recommend adoption of the three resolutions.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Allen for staff recommendation and a second by Councilmember Hussey. Mr. City Attorney, is there something you'd like to read? Not this time?
No, only for ordinances. But thank you for giving me that.
I thought maybe you'd like a resolution, change things up. Very good. All right, Madam City Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussey?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor McNaboe?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item 16 is a request of the County of San Bernardino Board of Supervisors to allocate at least 10% of its $38 million in CARES Act Corona Relief Funding to the 24 local municipal governments within the county on a per capita basis. Mr. City Manager Harold Duffy?
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager. As the mayor said earlier, this is a request for the County of San Bernardino Board of Supervisors to allocate 10% of the $380 million they received in the Coronavirus Relief Fund. On March 27th, 2020, President Trump signed the Coronavirus Relief and Economic Securities Act into place. That allowed for $150 billion to be given to states and local municipalities that had a population of greater than 500,000, based on a specific formula. The County of San Bernardino's unincorporated population is approximately 312,000. Yet, San Bernardino County was eligible to receive $380 million in CARES Act CRF funding because the Treasury's formula counts incorporated and unincorporated populations as an eligibility factor in CARES Act Coronavirus Relief Funding. Cities and counties with populations less than 500,000 did not receive CARES Act CRF funding. In California, only six cities and 15 counties received funding. So let me just show the council. The numbers, there's $15 billion in total. The state of California got $9 billion. And then these counties, Alameda County, $291 million, Contra Costa County, $200 million, Fresno County, $81 million, Fresno City had a population of 500,000, got $92 million. Kern County got $157 million. Los Angeles County got $1 billion. Los Angeles City got $694 million. Orange County got $554 million. Riverside County got $431 million. Sacramento County got $181 million. Sacramento City received $89 million. So when a city, when, when a county has a city in it that gets a population, their number, their, their share goes down. San Bernardino County received $380 million and San Bernardino County has no cities of more than, you know, up to that $500,000 number, 500 million number. San Diego County received $334 million. San Diego City received $2848 million. San Francisco received $153 million. San Joaquin County received $132 million.
Isn't San Francisco City the same as San Francisco County? They're one in the same?
Yes, they are one in the same. San Jose City received $178 million. San Mateo County, $133 million. Santa Clara County, $158 million. Stanislaus County received $96 million. Ventura County received $147 million. And every state in the Union receives a minimum of $1 billion. That's, that's the base regardless of your population. And so what San Diego County did in terms of their $334 million, they carved out $25 million and gave it to, gave a share to its 17 cities. Now, as we go on today, we look about at this, out of the 15.3 million, 8.4 billion went, went to the, went to the various cities other than the counties, other than, than the state. On May 4th, 2020, and again on May 28th, 2020, the Treasury issued an update to their guidelines called Coronavirus Relief Fund Frequently Asked Questions. And this is part of the guidelines for the frequently asked questions. So the guidance says that funding can be used to meet payroll expenses for public safety, public health, healthcare, human services and similar employees whose services are substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to COVID-19 public health emergency. And so the question that, that cities and, and counties and the state was asking was, how does a government determine whether payroll expenses for a given employee satisfy the substantially dedicated condition? And the Treasury came back twice with this answer. The fund is designated to provide ready funding to address unforeseen financial needs and risks created by the COVID-19 public health emergency. For this reason, and as a matter of administrative convenience, in light of the emergency nature of the program, a state, territorial, local or tribal government may presume that payroll costs for public health, public safety employees are payments for a service substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to COVID-19 public health emergencies. The other categories are telework enhancement, infrastructure, facility, infrastructure, economic support initiatives, sanitation compliance and social distancing. And so those are the categories in which this, the federal government is saying that, that, that the Coronavirus Relief Fund can be, can be used for. And so over the past three months, cities and county of San Bernardino worked together to slow the spread of COVID-19 throughout the county. While some communities were hit harder than others, COVID-19 is no respect of municipal or county boundary lines. Yet, as the economy began to shut down, each city had to address its own unique fiscal circumstances. The $380 million was allocated to the County of San Bernardino based on its unincorporated and incorporated populations. And while the significant portions of $380 million received by the county will support countywide public health needs, the cities are also facing the following eligibility, eligible COVID-19 related expenses. We are practicing social distancing. We are having sanitation compliance issues. We are having economic support initiatives that we'd like to, like move forward. We have, we would like to do some facility enhancements. We have telework enhancement, infrastructure. And obviously, like most cities in California, where their general fund budgets are 35 to 70% for, for public safety, we have those same, those same costs. And so this item came out of a continual conversation that we were having with the city managers and the county through our cooperation with COVID-19. And while some people believe that the state will eventually provide the, the city with some proceeds, San Diego County actually moved forward and shared those revenues. One of the frequently asked questions also, that was One of the frequently asked questions also that was mentioned to the Treasury Department was, can a, a agency give money to another agency? As long as it's COVID-19 related, yes, a county can share, a state can share those resources with their local govern, with their local government. And so if the county, if the County of San Bernardino established a COVID-19 Coronavirus Relief Fund for local municipalities in the amount of $38 million, the per capita rate for each resident of the county would be about $17.50. If we look at our population, it would be about $225,000 that we could use for COVID-eligible responsible, responsible items. And obviously, it's not, the request isn't just for the county to give us money, but there would be checks and balances associated with that. So we would then agree to use those for COVID-eligible responsibilities. So with that, I'm available for any questions the council might have.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Allen?
Hey, Mr. Duffy, on page 397, second paragraph down, down at the bottom of that paragraph, the last sentence says, "The transfer of CRF from a county to a state is allowable?"
Yes, and it, it actually, it should be to a city.
So, okay. Yeah, I was, that's, was my question?
Yes.
Okay. So it's from a county to a city?
Yes.
Is allowable? Okay.
And that was the reference that I was using about county to San, County of San Diego transferring to $25 million to 17 of its local, local cities. And I also provided an article where it showed the various cities talked about how they were going to be utilizing the, the funds.
Further questions? Councilmember Hussey?
Mr. Duffy, why are we having so much issue with the county giving us money? Are they worried about something? Are they worried about the second wave, or?
Yes, the county is worried about the, the second wave occurring. And so one of the things too is that what the county has referenced to me is that the county signed the agreement with the federal government. And the county says, if the city misappropriates that, that money, then they would be on the hook for that. And so one of the things that the resolution calls for is for the city, if they receive the money, to say they will utilize it properly or they will be responsible for, for, for the repayment of that, of those proceeds.
Further questions? All right, hearing none, are there any requests to speak on this item?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Mr. Steinlein.
Oh, all right. No, thank you. Okay, I, I thought I saw you raising your hand as well. Okay, any, anybody on the, on the phone or on Zoom?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. We'll close public comment and bring it back to council for consideration on this item.
I'll move the recommendation.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Hussey. Please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussey?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor McNibow?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. So we'll move on to a request for future agenda items by city council. And pursuant to the city council policy, council members may bring forward an interest, an item of interest that will require more than an hour of staff time to complete. And then the item will be agendized for discussion and perhaps further direction to staff. And pursuant to requirements in the Brown Act, no other items may be considered during this time. And so there are two items. One of them is mine. And it is a regional joint powers policing authority. We had a lot of discussion about our sheriff. I, I really believe that our sheriff does a, a great job for us, and they have for a lot of years. But the discussions continue to come back about the cost and the rising of cost. And all I would like is for council to have a discussion about, perhaps exploring with other cities, the, if there's interest in a regional joint powers policing authority that might allow us to provide public safety at a reduced cost. It, it may not as well. I mean, we, we actually looked at fire to see if we could do something different there as well. So my request is that we at least have a conversation about it. And so that's my motion.
Second.
I'll second.
I, I think I heard Mayor Protem second. Is that true? Okay, so please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussey?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem, I'm sorry, Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor McNibow?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right, and then the next item is from Councilmember Hussey, and it's for an increase in fines for illegal fireworks. Councilmember Hussey, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I know we got a thing about how much the fines are with the, the county fire. But, you know, I also read a thing with San Bernardino offering like rewards part of the fees or the fines to help people like, you know, like a bad boy for turning them in. Something's got to be done. I think what's going on is might not, you know, people are lighting the fireworks all the time, they don't care. And I think the slap on the hand's not helping. So I would like just to see if we can increase fines. And the city, if the city ordinance can put in additional fine on top of the county, if we could go that route, and then we could have some kind of, once we establish the fines, if we could, the person that turned it in, some kind of reward fee for doing something like that. Not going out there and saying bounty hunters, but just something to get people, instead of turning a blind eye, that they actually do something about it. That's all I have, Mayor.
So you have a motion to bring this back for a discussion?
I do have a motion.
All right, I'll second it for a vote.
Second.
Oh, Councilmember Wilson seconded it, or Mayor Protem Wilson seconded it. So please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussey?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor McNibow?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, City Manager Communications, Mr. Duffy?
Yes, Mayor, I actually have some items tonight to discuss with the council.
Excellent.
Okay, so we have the city manager update for June 23, 2020. We're going to talk about the COVID-19 updates and also a workshop for Code of Ethics Council priorities. The clerk will be calling you this week to asking, asking you over the next two weeks what your availabilities are in terms of having that, setting up that workshop. We're going to talk about illegal fireworks. So first, the coronavirus update. So currently, this is the information that I pulled before about 5:00 PM tonight. And you'll see that our Grand Terrace number has gone up, but it's a small chart, so let me get you a little different view. This is the chart for the East Valley. And so just so the council's aware, is that if you look at the little asterisk here, that asterisk indicates that there was a breakout of coronavirus at a local facility in that particular city. It almost says that every city in the East Valley has that little asterisk next to it. That either a group home or something of that, or medical facility had, had some sort of a breakout. So that might contribute to the, the steady increase in the number that we, we see here for the city of Grand Terrace. This is the, by the numbers, so as of today, there were 10,000, 10 coronavirus cases. There were 234 deaths in San Bernardino County. There are four deaths in the city of Grand Terrace. And then there were 616 GT residents that have been tested so far. So speaking of testing, so on this coming Thursday at our Grand Terrace Senior Center, anyone 55 years or older can get tested. And it's, it's a self-test now, so they'll be showing you exactly how to do the test. It's really easy. It's going to be in the senior center. It's put on by the County of San Bernardino, and there is no cost for, for this particular program. You can still call and get an appointment. And if you can't get an appointment, you can most likely even call that particular day, and they may even allow you to do, to do a walk-in. It's June 25th, it's Walk-In Testing Clinic at Senior Center for 55 years or older. Okay. This is also something that the county put out this past week on youth sports, practice and play during COVID-19. So public health is now time to get children back into youth sports. The state has unveiled a three-phase plan to getting our kids back at play safely. Currently, the county's in phase one, which allows youth to engage in conditions, drill, exercise activities, while practicing social distancing. If your child participates in these activities, take steps to keep everyone safe, and it lists things that, in terms of six feet apart, wear masks outdoors instead of indoor as possible, wash hands frequently, clean and disinfect equipment, supplies, and uses. When we get to phase two, youth sports will begin. Teens will be able to practice and play games without an audience. And then phase three would allow the games to be played with an audience. So we're currently in, in phase, in phase one. And once again, you can, you can go to the website and get updated information. If you go to the city's website and just click on this logo, you will be able, it'll take you directly to all the county's, county's information. So are there any questions on the coronavirus update?
Questions at this time? Councilmember Hussey?
On the youth sports, you know, I know it's the phase one, of course. I don't know what kind of sport, you can be six feet apart all the time, but, you know, soccer, maybe, I don't know, but when do they expect to go on phase two and phase three on that?
I believe this, this is within two weeks, they should be able to go to, to the phase two. But that was prior to, you know, we've got a big shift in cases now that are occurring. So I'm not, I'm not sure if that two-week model they gave me last week is going to still come into play. But as soon as they do, we will contact the sports leagues and let them.
Are fields prepared, ready for youth sports?
Our, our fields have never been unmaintained. We've, we've continued to provide that, the, the maintenance on our.
And that new soccer field that they spent a lot of money in?
I think they're starting to, to, to do the work on those, on those fields. That's the school district's field.
All right, thank you.
Just to follow on that question about the soccer field that belongs to the school district, they did let the maintenance go on it. Is it irreparable, the, the damage that was done?
I, I don't believe so, Mayor, and I believe over the last couple of weeks, I've, I've actually seen them start working on that, on it. But I can certainly check in with the superintendent.
Thank you.
As I mentioned earlier, the city clerk will call the council and try to establish a, a workshop date. And the workshop will be on a different day than our normal, I mean, it won't be a council meeting workshop. It'll be a workshop for the purposes of going over the Code of Ethics and council policies. Let's talk about illegal fireworks. So the Sheriff's Department and also San Bernardino County Fire, Fire Marshals have been, instead of making plans to try to address some of the illegal firework activities that are occurring. And so as you saw, the press release that was released just last week regarding how to report illegal fireworks. So the, the Fire Marshal's Office has established a website, a, a place where residents can call in or can get on the website, and they can actually list information of where they heard the call, where, I mean, where they heard the fireworks, provide detailed information. This is an anonymous site, which is different from what our Sheriff's Department has been advocating, because our Sheriff's Department's overall protocol is, if you call the Sheriff's Department, and I'll get to that in just a second, they have certain criteria they'd like you to, like you to follow. So to report illegal fireworks, the sheriffs will respond. So that's, that's a guarantee the sheriff is saying. They may not respond right away, but they will respond if you call. This is the non-emergency number, the dispatch number, 909-387-8313. And if you call the Sheriff's Department, and it should be when you see and hear fireworks, call the Sheriff's Department. And be prepared to identify the individual. That's important. So if the, if the dispatcher asks you questions about the address, the location, did you, did you see what the person was wearing? Please be patient and answer those questions, because the officer's going to ask you those same thing. But one of the things that might happen is if the officer has that information when they're going to that, that area, if they see the individual in the action, they already have the information. So it's very important that you provide as much information as possible. And then leave your contact information so the sheriff can make contact, contact with you. In addition, the legal fireworks, both the sheriff and the fire department will have increased patrol units. Currently, we receive a stipend for all fireworks sales, and that money is actually used to help us with law, law enforcement services. And so what we're looking at now is we have about $2,800 from last year. So at the point in time when the fireworks sales start, our Sheriff's Department will look at the total allocation that they have, and they will develop a strategy to go out and make sure that residents are not popping the legal ones and addressing the illegal fireworks also. But this is an opportunity for, for the sheriff to put additional resources out on, on the street as soon as those fireworks sales start. They'll be able to do that, in addition to our, our normal patrol. And so without, I'm available for any questions the council might have. And also Lieutenant Lane is also available for answering any questions.
Do you know that residents are not waiting until 4th of July to set off fireworks? They are, they have been doing so for the past couple of weeks?
I, I am aware of that, Mayor, and my only comment regarding, once the fire, once the legal sales start, the proceeds that we received for the legal fireworks sale, that's not going to stop Lieutenant Lane from actually doing his, his current activities with, with a regular law enforcement.
Okay, so the, the Fire Department and the Sheriff Department, numbers are good during this time, not just on the 4th of July?
Absolutely. Those numbers are good all, all the time.
Okay. Questions? Councilmember Hussey?
Yeah, like, like you said, Mayor, I mean, they're going off all the time. I mean, I mean, walking, when I'm walking, I hear them going off during the day. And it's a shame we had to waste a resource to go take care of this problem. We could be chasing somebody who's stealing catalytic converters or stealing tires and stuff. It's, and what really gets me is just the, you know, people are saying that's their right and everything else. Well, it's also they're infringing on other people's rights for sleeping during the day, sleeping at night. They're doing it on purpose just to irritate everybody, and it's becoming a game and a joke for them. But it's, it's a shame that we had to waste a resource on that, you know. Maybe I just did it the right way, but, um, thank you guys for the, the cat and mouse show that you got to do on this, to chase, I mean, to try to get them at the, and like I said, the residents just follow through and, you know, do what's right, don't get involved. But, you know, just make sure that, you know, I mean, don't get confrontational, but just get involved and make sure that you take care of it. Because a story, there was a resident that caught a kid, and he talked to the parents, and they gave him the slap on the hand. Well, the next thing you know, the kid did another illegal firework and cut a tree on fire. And now the kids are facing more times, so the parents take care of themselves. It's a sad situation, but, you know, thank you, the Sheriff's Department. And I wish, you know, these people would just stop, but it's all over the country. I don't know why it's so much this year, but it's, it's crazy. And thank you for the residents and their patience going through all this. I know your, your patience were worn thin, and we only have so many resources to take care of. That's all I just have, Mayor, my comment on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Allen?
Well, Mr. Duffy, when is that council ethics workshop, or, I missed that?
The city clerk will call and see what, what your availability is for that.
Okay, are we looking at sooner rather than later?
Yes, within the next two weeks, we'd like to try that.
Thanks.
All right, Mr. Duffy, thank you very much. We have no closed session. And so we will adjourn to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on Tuesday, July 14, 2020, at 6:00 PM. Any request to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. Thank you to everybody that called in and came and spoke tonight, and thank my council colleagues for their discussions. We are adjourned.